Good morning, welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, April 4th, 2018. We're in the Senator hearing room at Courthouse Square in Salem, Oregon on a lovely rainy April morning.
We need the rain.
Yeah. So, we always begin with the Pledge of Allegiance if you would join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first item of business is public comment. We don't have anyone signed up for public comment, but would invite anyone who is listening on Facebook Live or CCTV to remember that this is your opportunity to come down and address the Board of Commissioners if you so choose. So, we will move now to our consent calendar, consent agenda. Commissioner Cameron.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll move the consent calendar first under Public Works. Approve an order setting a public hearing for mass gathering 18-001 Supergame for April 18th, 2018. Also, under Public Works, reschedule a public hearing for May 9th to consider Zone Change Comprehensive Plan ZCCP 17-004 Helms Clerk File Number 5741. And, under Public Works, approve two Oregon Federal Lands Program grant applications, first being North Fork Roadside Safety Improvements Phase II, $650,000, and second, North Fork Road Improvements, $1,183,796.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. All in favor say aye.
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 And they are approved. All right, we have one, two, three, four action items under action today. The first one is under Board of Commissioners, and this is to consider approval -- oh, John's not here, so...
I think we can handle it.
All right. Of a joint license agreement with Marion County, Salem Area Mass Transit District, and Salem Saturday Market to utilize the North Block unit of Courthouse Square for Wednesday Markets beginning May through September 2018. So, who would -- you want to?
Well, maybe. This is a project, I guess, that started last year to have the Wednesday markets in the North Block. It was a bright and happy event every week. I didn't ever hear of any complaints or problems, and it looked like it was fun and a nice addition to the downtown. So, with that little bit, I would make a motion that we approve, accept the recommendation, which is to approve the license agreement.
And I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second? That was very well done, Commissioner.
Well, it was short.
Right.
I'm happy that it goes on.
It was a really good place to have it, and they didn't have to shut down the streets. I mean, they had to shut down this, you know, takedown and setup, but it really, really is good, and hopefully, long-term plans are still looking at building a structure somehow that they could do it year-round.
You know, I might add one thing, that we've been looking all these years and went through different versions of trying to use that North Block, and this finally is a use and a good one.
Yeah.
Well, it's interesting, because way back when I was on a Salem Town Square Committee, where they were trying to figure where the town square was, and they all thought the North Block was the town square. So, now, we're having the market on the town square. And the other thing I was going to mention is that I have great memories last year of going out there and scouring everyone for flowers when we were looking for the...
Oh, yes.
For the flowers for hands across the bridge, yes, so, pretty cool. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve a joint license agreement. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And that's approved. Moving on to health. Number two, consider approval of an order appointing, sorry, Mark Bjorkland, and reappointing Sean Baird and Lauren Hall to the Ambulance Service Area Advisory Board with terms ending January 31st, 2021. Carrie Muller's here, got a couple of our nominees here. Do you all want to come up?
Good morning, Commissioners, for the record. I'm Carrie Muller, Health and Services Administrator, and I also am the ASA Administrator. So, with me this morning, I'll let the gentlemen introduce themselves, but I'm here to give my strong endorsement for the appointment and the reappointment for both Sean and Mark. The Ambulance Services Committee is established in Marion County pursuant to ORS 682.062, and it requires Marion County to adopt a plan for coordination of ambulance services. This is a strong and effective committee, and they're doing some really important work here in Marion County. I'm going to ask Sean, as the Chair of the Committee, to say a little bit more about the committee and introduce Mark.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Carrie. As you know, the Ambulance Service Advisory Committee has really about three charges. One is developing a plan for the county, which includes setting the ambulance service areas for emergency and non-emergency ambulance service, and ultimately making recommendations about providers which come through the Health Administration and then to the Board for final approval, which we just went through at the end of 2017. But in addition to that important work, we also try to address issues of quality of care for citizens of Marion County and visitors to Marion County across the entire system. We have, you know, I just lost track, but about 11 providers of ambulance service in the county, and then a couple of dozen first response agencies that utilize EMTs or emergency responders in some way. In addition, we have law enforcement and our hospital partners. This committee is really the one place where we bring all of those folks together and work through the important issues that affect continuity of care for patients and make sure that they get the best 911 response they possibly can. So, currently, the couple of issues that we're working on now that we've wrapped up the plan, we're working closely with the health team and the sheriff's team on integrating the crisis response teams into how we work with 911 on ambulance response, because as you can imagine, sometimes those calls tend to overlap, and so getting that communication link going has been very important. And we're working through issues of, because we're all very busy and running a lot of calls, that means that ambulances sometimes tend to be unavailable at the hospital for a little while as they're handing over patients, and we're working to coordinate and streamline to make sure that that's as efficient as it can be. So, those are our top couple of priorities as we move into the spring and summer. And as far as the appointments, I'm honored to be considered for reappointment. I've enjoyed serving on the committee for many years and hopefully can continue to offer that service to the county. I'll allow, I'll let Mark introduce himself, but since Lauren wasn't able to be here today, I'll just say a couple words about him. He is a lead dispatcher at Metcom 911 Center, and he plays an important role on the committee as a representative of 911 centers in making sure that the perspective of both field provider and at the public safety answering point gets taken into account.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mark Bjorkland. I'm a Battalion Chief, EMS Chief for Marion County Fire District Number One. First of all, I want to thank everyone for the curveball coming up here, knowing that not knowing that this is what it was today, and getting up here and kind of introducing myself and thanking you for the opportunity for this appointment. I'm looking forward to the excitement, trying to provide a little insight from beginning with an ambulance service with Marion County in '95 as a volunteer and '97 as paid, and staying with the same department and the same ambulance coming up, and now getting involved in the administration part and the direction part. It's kind of an interesting challenge and a fun challenge that I hope I can bring a little more insight and experience to, and look forward to helping Sean and Carrie with the whole planning and all the challenges that we have to come up. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity.
Questions or comments?
Oh, I would a little bit. I had the opportunity to -- what was my title again? What are you doing?
Administrator.
Yes, I was an administrator for most of a year in between Rod Hawkins leaving and got an opportunity to watch the Board work and truly trying in their best efforts to just make everything work out and it all, it was probably the easiest duty, so easy I didn't even remember what my title was. But it's a good bunch, and Sean leaves them wonderfully. So, I'm certainly approving these appointments.
Any questions?
No, it's great. Thank you for your service, appreciate it.
I just want to say, Sean, you just did the most fantastic job leading this group, and told the story a million times, but it was very contentious when I first became a Commissioner and where those boundaries were, and especially over in East Salem, Fire District One and Salem were not working together famously, and so it's great what you've done to bring that forward. I really appreciate that. I would like to add one thing to your agenda at some point, and that is, my observation is that people do not know what to do when ambulances come. I am just appalled. I've been on the streets of Salem several times recently where an ambulance has had its lights going trying to get to the hospital. People don't move over, they don't stay in one place, they're like little cats kind of darting here and there. I don't know, I mean, I don't know how you actually manage to drive with people as create, and with so many cars on the road, and I just happened to be, have a front row seat where a person right in front of me had a light at an intersection, the ambulance was coming down Mission Street, and as it got to the intersection where it was clear, it starts picking up speed to get to the hospital, right? Lights going, and somebody in front of me tried to gun it and beat the ambulance and collided with it and ended up, yeah. And so, I just think maybe there's an opportunity for us to, you know, it used to be, a long time ago, they had all these PSAs and things were reinforced, and everyone took driver's training and, you know.
Right.
But I'm not sure that that's the case anymore. So, I'm just throwing that out as maybe a public awareness thing that we need to get back to basics and help people understand you're supposed to move over, stay in one place, let them get by. It's not a very complicated message, but sure is not what I'm observing being done lately. So, tell me if I'm all...
No, I think that you make a very important point, and it is something that we are unfortunately dealing with on a daily basis, but I think your reminder that maybe we can leverage some other partners and try and work on some public information issues, it's something we could definitely put on our plate to take on.
Thanks. Thank you for your service, and thank you, Mark, for stepping forward and being willing to serve. And Carrie, thank you for your leadership in the group, too.
Commissioner, if I could follow up, I thought maybe you were going not just on the driving part, but as an old, I was an EMT for 20 years, there were things that, I don't know if you've ever talked about, but once people get there, like make, if your address isn't easily seen or have that available, maybe send somebody out to tell the responders where they're supposed to go, what the issue is, truly on arriving, there's some work to be done there, too.
Hey, but we could do things on billboards, websites, you know, I mean, there's some things we could...
It really fits nicely with the direction of the Health and Human Services Department. We are going to launch a community public health campaign. I think that's really sets really nicely in terms of the scope and work for the Health Department, so this seems like a really nice add to that, so I appreciate the comments.
So, let's see, whose motion is it?
I believe it's mine.
Cameron, I think it is yours.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve an order of appointing, all right, Mark, let's see your last name?
Bjorkland.
Bjorkland.
Bjorkland, and reappointing Sean Baird and Lauren Hall to the Ambulance Service Area Advisory Board with terms ending January 31st, 2021.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. See, you needed to grow up in a story where there were Finnish people, Swedish people, Norwegian people, and then you'd know how to pronounce these names.
So, the J is almost like a Y.
Right.
Bjork.
Right. So, what country is it?
Sweden.
Sweden, right, okay, there you go. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. And I've been to Stockholm, but I still couldn't have said it right.
Well, when I was a cheerleader in Austria, one of our star players was Yuka Perkiamaki. He was, so, Yuka Perkiamaki, fight, fight, fight. You learn how to say those names.
Was he any good?
Yeah, he was real good.
Oh, okay.
One of my favorite names to say. All right, let's move on to Public Works, number three. Consider approval of the Intergovernmental Agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for $2,266,389, oh, really, and 11 cents in incoming funds for the Jefferson Marion Highway, Marion Creek Bridge replacement through March 31st, 2028. And Brian Nicholas is here to tell us about this item. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Nicholas, Capital Projects Manager with Marion County Public Works. We have a project that is underway to replace a small bridge over Marion Creek. That bridge is located on Jefferson Marion Road, in between Jefferson and the town of Marion, about a mile southwest of Marion, just a small rural bridge, concrete bridge with timber foundations, and those timbers are just on their last legs. So, that is slated to get replaced this summer, and we've had two public meetings to bring folks into loop on what that plan looks like. The work so far, the work we have completed is design permitting, right-of-way services, utility coordination, and the contract is assembled and essentially ready to advertise for bid. All that work was done under an existing project agreement with ODOT. It's a federally funded project. Back in January, ODOT came to us and said, "Hey, how would you like to exchange the federal construction dollars for state funding?" And you might have noticed that all of the project agreements you've seen come across your desk this calendar year, even those that are, were funded under a federal grant program through ODOT, they've all been state-funded local project agreements. That's a, something we call state fund exchange. Since the passing of House Bill 2017, ODOT's had the state resources to make those offers to local agencies, and we've been taking advantage on that on as many projects as we can. And so, when they said, "Would you like to do that in this project?", we said, "Yes, we would like to take a look at what that agreement looks like." So, the agreement is before you, and really, what it does is it takes all unspent dollars on the existing agreement and converts it to a new agreement where it's all state-funded. So, we've already spent a portion of the federal dollars, that $2,266,389.11, that's the balance left on our existing agreement. So, the, really, the advantage for Marion County to go ahead and change the source of funding for this project is it really streamlines project delivery during construction, and actually has the same benefit for ODOT. So, under this agreement, we'll be able to go to bid immediately, and actually, our goal is to replace this bridge during a short-term road closure during summer vacation so we don't impact school traffic and that sort of thing. All the public outreach has been pretty positive with folks in the area, understanding what the detour will look like and the impacts that they'll have to endure for that short period of time. We're shooting for a construction window of about six weeks. And this fund exchange will really, it'll help solidify our ability to make sure and deliver on that timeline.
Yes.
Couple things. Well, one, I drove over that bridge twice yesterday, and I didn't linger, you know what I'm telling you? But we were just in Jefferson about a month ago, and I know you addressed that you, the public outreach has been good, but they were very concerned about it, not knowing what they were supposed to do, so I hope in that month, truly, that's been answered, and I guess for my sake, as I was driving it yesterday, I thought, well, how would I do this? Do you know off the top of your head how I'd get to Jefferson now?
Yeah, we had our final public meeting two weeks ago. It was an evening meeting, so it probably was since you had your meeting at Jefferson. The detour route is going to be Parish Gap Road and Hunsucker Road. Those are the, pretty much, the largest volume roads that are in that area. So, unfortunately, it is, it's a longer detour than we'd like to see. However, most of, we've got a signing plan that really goes all the way out to the state highways at either side of that corridor. So, our idea is those folks that are using Jefferson Marion Road as a cutoff between Stateon or Highway 22 and I-5, we'll be moving them to Jefferson-Sio Road, so we'll have a straight-line shot on a major route that way. And in that way, we're hoping to keep the detour traffic on Parish Gap Road mostly to local traffic.
Well, you know, it makes me think that the people who use that most would be like me going to Albany. Somehow, people in the state and sublimity area ought to be told perhaps it's better to just take 22 and I-5 instead of the other.
Yeah.
So, maybe reaching out to those communities and the local papers or something might be helpful, because they're the ones driving it.
Yep, I agree. We've got a plan to put some articles in the newspaper as construction moves closer, but we need to get through the bidding process, make sure we have a successful bid and know where to move it forward.
So, while I'm talking, then, I would make a motion, Madam Chair, that we do approve the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Department of Transportation, Oregon Department, for $2,266,389.11 for funds for the Marion, Jefferson Marion, Marion Creek Bridge replacement.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Intergovernmental Agreement, and I did make a summary comment about the 11 cents, but I just think there's efficiencies to be gained if we just, you know, like, don't have to track cents, but that's just my own personal feeling. All right, but it sounds like a great project, and sounds also like a very increased efficiency by not having the federal dollars to have to deal with, so, good job on that. All right, any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll still pick a penny off the ground if it's there.
Could we get them 11 cents somehow and just...
I have it in my pocket right now.
I'm just going to wonder whether they're actually going to spend that 11 cents in the end.
No, we won't, but the original agreement was a nice round number.
Right, yeah. All right. So, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 It's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Last item, under Sheriff's Office, number four. Consider approval of an order initiating formation procedures to add law enforcement services to the East Salem Service District and to schedule a public hearing for May 9th, 2018. And with us are Sheriff Jason Myers and Scott Norris from Legal Counsel. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, for the record. My name is Jason Myers, Marion County Sheriff. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today about an area, an issue that the Sheriff's Office has been looking at for quite some time, and that is the growth in East Salem and the growth in services delivered by the Sheriff's Office to the community. Understanding that the Board has placed a priority on public safety, which I very much appreciate, we acknowledge that the general fund oftentimes can't keep up with the requirements that the Sheriff's Office has for providing patrol services. So, we've been exploring different ways to potentially enhance services to this particular area, and one of those ways is through an existing service district through a law enforcement service district with a fee that would help support patrol deputies for that specific area. So, I'm going to kind of walk through the rationale behind this, and I'm going to start with this slide, and what you see in the lighter green areas that are, there's a circle around those, well, that accounts for about 5.59 square miles, so that would be the Janray area and the Four Corners areas. That would be 5.59 square miles. In those two areas, it's about point, it's a half a percent of the county's geographic size, which is almost 1,200 square miles. About 54% of our law enforcement calls come from that area, so basically, one out of every two calls comes from that area. So, as you can see, it's a small area, but it has a large population. If you were to add up the populations of both Janray and Four Corners, it would be equivalent to the size of the city of Kaiser. We've, over the course of the last five years, we've seen our calls for service in that area increase. That is represented in this slide of the blue bars. The other areas, the green and red would be North County and South County. Those are large geographic areas. Central is essentially East Salem, extends a little beyond East Salem, that prior map, but it's within that same geographical area. This chart's a little busy, but I just want to give some perspective here for the, so that we just kind of clearly understand. So, Salem Police Department has approximately 11.4 officers per 10,000 residents. Kaiser has, you know, roughly 10.7 per 10,000 residents, and the Sheriff's Office or the Marion County, the unincorporated areas, has about 8.4 deputies per 10,000. Now, the thing about this chart is, is that those geographic areas are fairly small, so you have concentrated officers in a particular area. We have a large area to cover. We have 1,200 square miles, and oftentimes, when our calls are happening in East Salem, we're pulling all the resources to East Salem, and we don't have the coverage out in the outlying areas because the deputies are concentrated in that area where we're having the most calls for service. And these charts really just show the population continues to increase in the unincorporated areas to include the East Salem area. The calls for services are going up, and our full-time employees, the law enforcement employees, have really remained static. I know the Commissioners have added a one position last fiscal year, one position the prior fiscal year, which we very much appreciate. We know that the general fund just doesn't support law enforcement. While it's the priority of the Board, there are other needs within the county infrastructure, and so, our staffing unfortunately has really remained static while those calls and population have continued to increase. What we've looked at is for this particular area, so it would be those areas that are outside of the cities, they're in the urban growth boundary, so it'd be East Salem. It's the same district as the Water and Sewer District. It would be $10 per month per household, per apartment, and per acre for commercial properties. That fee would provide for 10 deputy positions that would be exclusive to those areas. I've got a slide that kind of shows, highlights that. So, with 10 deputy positions, that allows us to staff one deputy in the Hayesville area 24 hours a day, three, seven days a week, 365 days a year. It takes about five employees because of vacation, sick time, to have one post, and the other five would be in the Four Corners area, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. These deputies would be exclusive to these areas. They would be working in these areas, providing that enhanced service to those communities. One of the things, we've talked to our Citizens Advisory Committee, we have members that live in these communities, and they really wanted some ownership. They are very supportive of this, so one of the things we would do is to ensure that the vehicles would represent the communities, they would have the community's names on the vehicles so that there's that pride of ownership, that this is, this is our deputy for our community through those fees. So, this is an example of the Hayesville vehicle, this is an example of the Four Corners vehicle. One of the things that we think is very important in the Sheriff's Office is that, like the positions we added, North County and up the North Fork, is that the deputies assigned would respond to calls in their downtime, they would focus on livability in these communities and in community engagement and problem solving. They would be geographically assigned, those would be their communities, and what we found when we have geographic assignment for deputies is that they really adopt the communities and take ownership over them. Our contract cities are very similar in that way. We would work to build safer communities, we'd work with the community in identifying the problems. What we've heard in East Salem oftentimes is graffiti and gang activity, and so those were the kinds of problems that we would work with the community to identify and then problem solve. And then the emphasis on quality, which all of our deputies do, but because of how busy we are and how few deputies we have on patrol, oftentimes, they're triaging things. This would allow us to really kind of zero in on the issues and work together more collaboratively with the community. It would allow more time to complete thorough investigations and to really address those livability concerns. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Scott.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Scott Norris with the Office of Legal Counsel. The East Salem Service District currently provides sewage, drainage, and street lighting services, and this proposal will add law enforcement services to the list of services provided by the East Salem Service District. The way that is done is by a formation process so that essentially, the East Salem Service District will be reformed to add law enforcement services to the district. The order that's before the Board this morning initiates that process and schedules a public hearing for May 9th for the Board to evaluate whether the district will benefit from the addition of law enforcement services. Following that hearing, if the Board determines that the area will be benefited, it issues an order scheduling a second public hearing, after which, if the Board decides to do so, law enforcement services will be officially added to the East Salem Service District. There are, the first hearing has to be noticed by publication and by posting. The second hearing is noticed by publication. And if there's any questions, we'd be happy to ask. And if there's any questions, we'd be happy to ask, answer them.
Questions?
Well, I just, if I could, Sheriff Myers, I didn't hear you say, and I thought you might, but maybe it's hard to compute, but in terms of response times and reliability, you describe a situation where, where, you know, deputies come from all over the county to service there, but there's also times, I have to think, where it's the other way, where they're drawn out. In fact, I was just in Jefferson a month ago, and you had resources from all over the county out there, but it would help to increase the surety that when someone calls, there'll be a quick and adequate response.
Yeah, this definitely would reduce our response time, it would enhance our presence in the community because it's an addition of the 10 positions to really focus on this area. So actually, not only would the East Salem area benefit, but the rest of the county would benefit from it.
And then I got a little tangled up in the numbers where you talked about Kaiser and Salem, et cetera, and this area being lower, but then you add 10 officers, but it's really one position, so could you sum up, when you get all done, would it be closer to Kaiser's, Salem's numbers, or just that 10% better, or whatever it is?
Yeah, actually, we have a handout that we're gonna give to community members, and it does articulate that pretty well. We will be closer. So Salem, the city of Salem is 11.4 officers per 10,000 residents. The city of Kaiser is 10.7 per 10,000. Currently, we're 8.4 per 10,000. If we add these 10, it'll raise us to 9.4. So we won't, we won't be as high as Kaiser or Salem, but we'll be closer to that number.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, yeah, and Sheriff, is there other standards throughout the state or country that you can cite, like, say, Washington County or someplace like that, that has many service districts?
Yeah, so that was one of the things, there's municipalities, there's a number of counties that have service districts similar to what we're looking at here, and they're all within Oregon.
Okay.
So I would wanna make a few comments, and I know we're gonna have a public hearing, and so we're gonna hear from people, and we're not making a decision today about this, but whether we're initiating a process, right?
Right.
But first of all, I wanna thank the Sheriff and thank, and the UnderSheriff, and thank Commissioner Cameron particularly for the work that they've done in getting this together, and Scott, for you, for the legal work that you've done. This has been an issue that's been a longstanding issue before Sheriff Myers became Sheriff, before I, all of us became Commissioners, but I'm recalling Joe Cast, right, who was the person I did my ride along with many years ago when I was, first year I was a Commissioner, dug my fingernails into the doors of that car as I was hanging on, and we were driving down Mission Street at 100 miles an hour. But as we were driving out in that Long Lancaster and Brown Road and, you know, all of those different areas, and that was my house district when, that I had just campaigned in the prior two years, so I had knocked on every door out in there between Silverton Road and, I can't remember the name of the road, but it's where Dairy Queen is down there. Anyway, that road, talking to people, realizing that we were in the county, out of the county, in the county, out of the county, as I was walking down those streets. And so as I joined the Board of Commissioners, and we realized, and Joe said, you know, that the lion sheriff, he actually had a larger number, but I think we, you know, kinda taken date and been more precise on it, but the idea that so many of their calls came from that area, and then hearing Commissioner Brent Tanna, who was going out to all the city councils when he joined the Board of Commissioners, and the, kinda the one thing that was coming back to us from city councils out in the canyon and North County and so on, was that they never saw patrol out there very often, and why is that? Because we have all of these needs in the, in the urban area, so it's like a small city. So the original concept was that this area would all be annexed, and I remember someone commenting that within 10 years, all that entire Salem area is gonna be annexed. Wow, won't that be good, because then they'll have Salem Police and so on. Well, things changed, and annexation is probably not in the cards in any massive scope, and here we are 16 years later from when I started, and the problem is, has grown because the area has grown even larger than it was before with population and more houses out there and schools and needs that they have out there. And so my first question would be, since, since folks out there are not paying city taxes to have city services even though they're in an urban area where they need services at a higher level than someone living out in unincorporated areas and farmland, is the $10 a month, has anyone done the math on that, is it, my guess is it's less, probably much less, than it would be for that area to be annexed into the city and pay city taxes to get that higher level of police service? Do we know the answer to that question?
We've looked at it. I think it would be good to, we've done comparables, so like-sized houses, whether, that are in the same kinda neighborhood, ones in the city and ones in the county. I know their tax rate, if they're in the city, is higher, but we could have actual ones, maybe, that might be helpful for people to have.
I think that's, that's a great idea, just to take two houses that are across the street or, you know, close to each other and find out.
What, here's what they are now, here's what it would be if you added $10 a month, and it's still not as much as what you would pay if you were annexed into the city, but you need this higher level of law enforcement.
Anecdotally, I think that's true, we just need the facts that would, would support that, yep. I think that's what we'll find out.
And then the other question I have is, and we've talked about this, and so I know there's things going on, but if you would just comment, Sheriff, on the outreach that the department's doing with the neighborhoods, you know, you talked about the public hearing, Scott did, and noticing it, but a lot of times, people aren't aware of those public hearings unless they read the fine print in the Statesman Journal or Republic, publish the notices, but are, are we getting people on email lists, having town hall forums, that kinda thing, to get people aware of what's going on, neighborhood associations, that kinda thing?
Yeah, that's a great question. So Commissioner Cameron and I have been to two meetings so far. We've been to the North Gate Neighborhood Association and presented this. We've gone to the Sheriff's Office Community Advisory Committee in March and shared this. We're scheduled tomorrow to go to the East Salem Neighborhood Association, and then we've scheduled a town hall meeting for the, the Four Corners area on April 17th, it'll be at HAWK. We're gonna notice that through nextdoor.com and our Facebook, as well as the county's Facebook, and then we're, we're planning a meeting for Jan, the Jan Ray area at Schmeckel Community College. We're just trying to align the date right now, we should have that in the next day or so. Again, we'll get that out, and I know Commissioner Cameron's working on a telephone town hall as well. We have notices published on the May ninth meeting at two, at three different locations in that community, and we'll continue to get the word out on these town halls. We have one-page flyers that we put together that we will be handing out as well.
Yeah, might be good on the public hearing on May ninth to do the next, I love the Nextdoor thing, I'm on Nextdoor for Salem, and there's so many people on there, a lot of activity, and to let people know that if they can't come, they can write in, so that we could get their written comments, 'cause I want, you know, it's great that you're doing the town halls, and that's more of an education opportunity, but we need to hear from people, the Board does.
I'd also like to extend thanks to the Public Works Department and Alan Haley and Dennis and Roxanne for the numbers they crunched and helping us get the data put together, and it's been a real good team effort to get that, get that information. It's taken us a while, but they've been there every step of the way for us too, so kudos to Public Works and the help that, that they've supplied to the Sheriff, and it's gonna be a good thing.
Yeah, great thing.
And, and I think, I think one of the things you can't, I don't know how you stress it or how you, how you put facts around it, but I think of the North County Deputy, you know, Deputy Bay, and how, I go to these meetings now up there, and, you know, we're talking about one deputy, not 24/7, and yet the communities are going, we are getting the service that we so needed, and the prevention that happens, the neighborhood watches and all that, there's just the whole community's attitude about, we can make a change in, in our public safety system by participating in it. And I think that's what we'll see in this particular situation as well, and having that deputy that shows up to the East Salem Neighborhood Association, whoever that one or two people are, it'll be really good, so excited to see lifting, I guess, lifting the livability of that community up to a, to a higher standard.
You know, I just follow up, and like in Sublimity, we have a deputy. They become kinda friends, people stop to talk to him, tell him what's going on, that you can't get that from somebody just passing through and looking. So it becomes really part of the community and more of a friend relationship.
Yep.
All right, very good. Well, thank you for the presentation. This is the beginning, and we will have more good things to come as we have the hearing and the town hall forums, and I know.
So, do we need a motion?
Yeah, informed, yep.
Okay. I will move that we approve an order initiating formation procedures to add law enforcement services to the East Salem Service District and to schedule a public hearing for May ninth, 2018.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, to approve an order and to schedule a public hearing for May ninth. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 It's approved unanimously.
Now, if you can laugh at me like I do, you know I don't think much of smart phones, you probably figured that out by now, but I found myself looking at this paper map and not being able to read it, and I tried to enlarge it, and it doesn't work, so, you should know.
That will go out, once we, it's, it's published, we'll put it out on Nextdoor so people can actually identify their street of whether they're in the service district or not, and they'll have a bunch of information. So we're continuing to refine those maps because it's important for people to see. Does this affect me or impact me, because we certainly want, if it does, them to be a part of this conversation.
Excellent, thank you. All right, well, that concludes our business today. We'll go ahead and read the Wednesday to Wednesday calendar.
Madam Chair, I, I just wanted, before you do that, or maybe it's after the calendar, I was gonna ask Commissioner if he ever had long hair in his life.
All right, go ahead, do this because.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I just, you know, John Latimer always told me that I'm a hippie commissioner, and I just wanted to bring in this, photos of me that, that proves that John Latimer is accurate, and I wondered if your hair was ever that long.
No. Although one of my girlfriend's father thought I was a little long hair, but it was just slightly over my ears, just so you know.
All right, so I don't know if they can bring this camera in, am I holding it the right direction? Jerome, can you get a close-up of this?
There he goes. Just wanted to, you know, know those days when we had hair.
All right, are we good?
Is that all that is?
Yeah.
There we go.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Important business at the Board of Commissioners meeting this morning. So let me go ahead now and read the Wednesday to Wednesday calendar. It is Wednesday, April 4th, 2018. We're just concluding our board session here at the Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square. At noon today is the Woodburn Marion County Monthly Meeting, that's at Louisa's Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn. From 2:00 to 4:00 is a meeting here at Courthouse Square in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor with Sponsors Inc., everybody talking about reentry housing. And at 5:30 today, in the Commissioners Boardroom, is the monthly meeting of the Marion County Fair Board. Tomorrow, Thursday, April 5th, is my daughter's birthday, and it's somebody else's birthday too, whose birthday is it?
Denise.
Denise.
Representative Bowles.
Great, okay. 7:00 AM to 8:15, we, the Commissioners will be at the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce, representing to their Public Policy Committee. It says County Community Forum, it's not quite a community forum, but that'll be at 1110 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem. Department Head Elected Officials Meeting will start at 8:30 on Thursday morning in the Commissioners Boardroom. That's a change from our usual 9:30 start time, so any department heads are listening, remember 8:30 this month. And then that will be followed at 10:45 by a meet and greet at the District Attorney's Office in their lobby on the third floor here at Courthouse Square. At noon, there will be a community forum with the Kaiser Rotary that will be held in the Kaiser Civic Center Iris Room at 9:30 Shimawa Road North in Kaiser. Thursday afternoon from 2:00 to 3:00 will be a work session, Regional Tourism Strategy and Funding Options in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. Then Friday, April 6th, I guess my pinwheel is still straight, is Child Abuse Prevention Month kickoff at, I believe it's at 8:30, is that when greeters start?
Greeters in the Capitol.
And you're the one going to greeters.
Right.
And that will be in the Capitol, and then outside the Capitol on the front steps will be the kickoff celebration starting at 10:00, and those blue ribbons are already on the tree, I've seen them as I've been driving down Court Street. Then on Monday, April 9th, at, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, are the meetings for, monthly meetings for Association of Oregon Counties, the morning or steering committee meetings, then around noon is the Legislative Committee, and then right after the Legislative Committee is the Board meeting. That's held at the Local Government Center at 1201 Court Street Northeast in Salem. Tuesday, April 10th, from 7:30 to 8:30 is the monthly State and Marion County meeting at the Covered Bridge Cafe, 510 North Third Avenue in Stateon. Then at 9:00 on Tuesday, April 10th, is the Oregon Second Chance Tour kickoff at the Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street Southeast in Salem. And then at 4:00 on the same day, Tuesday, April 10th, is the monthly meeting of the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council. That will be held in the Commissioners Boardroom here at Courthouse Square. On April 11th, Wednesday, one week from today, at 9:00 AM, we'll be back here in the Senator Hearing Room for a regular Wednesday board session. That will be followed at 2:00 with a one-on-one meeting with elected official Bill Burgess up in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor, Courthouse Square. Long calendar today. All right, besides long hair, what do you wanna talk about, anything?
Well, it's been a busy week already.
It has been a busy week.
The one-on-one meetings, yeah. Well, I just think initiating that process today is, it's been a long time coming, and we've still got a long road to go, but that's a really positive thing for all involved, I think.
I started a new board today, and I hope it helps the county, it may not be related enough, has to do with the locks at Oregon City and development in that area. I think it has potential to, for tourism, recreation, and maybe even commerce, to be able to take boats up and down the river again, but I hope it's worth the time.
The locks.
Willamette Locks.
Yeah, I took a tour not too long ago, that whole process.
Yeah, they've been working hard on that.
Commissioner Schrader's working really hard to make that happen.
Today's, we're through the whole, the whole history, I don't wanna get there on time, so I think I'm gonna stop by Woodburn just to eat lunch and then probably leave before you even start talking, but then I'll go on to Westland from there, but to go through the history and meet people, so it's a, kinda the first one's the important one, to get the good foundation and see what they're trying to do.
Well, I think Darlene Houli and Lisa Nato are working on it at one time to get some sort of a federal designation, is that, did that happen?
Yeah.
Right. And now, and so now then they're just doing more of a expansion.
Yeah, trying to raise the money, you know, the, the, there's two things going on there. You got the locks, and then on the other side, the old Blue Herring Mill, that Clackamas, Oregon City wants to redevelop that into.
As a tourism area.
Right, nice area, and, you know, that's the kinda projects that would be really nice, 'cause those falls are, you know, wonderful to go look at, but it's, how do you see them and how do you get there? And that day I was up there, we took, it was like, it seemed like it was a whole day, but we actually, I took some pictures outside of one of the broken windows of the Blue Herring Paper Plant that just framed in this like green glass of the falls, and it was so cool. And there's some really great opportunities for tourism and economic development there. So it's that and the locks. Of course, we don't need the locks anymore for our ferries because we, we invested in that.
I think if we had them, oh yeah, we, we could at least go up, and maybe you had to make some longer-term repairs, you'd like to get up to Swan Island, for example.
Right. Now we have to, now we pull them out with those big airbags. It's kinda neat to see that.
So the reason that we're meeting early on our Department Head meeting is because the PACE Group is going to be doing their presentation about communications, and they're gonna practice on us again, but this time, instead of just the Commissioners and some staff from the Board Office, it'll be all the Department Heads, and so we'll have a discussion about how, how they view these ideas that this group has in terms of improving our county communications. It's interesting, we have had, just in the few issues that we had in this board meeting today, and the few meetings that I've had in the past couple days, the awareness of the public of the things that we do keeps coming up over and over. The ambulance issue that we raised, the service district issue, yesterday we went to, Commissioner Cameron and I were at the Stepping Up Launch Meeting that they had, talking about LEED, the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion, and I was commenting that there was a Enforcement Assisted Diversion, and I was commenting that there was a Facebook post on homelessness, I think, and then one of the comments underneath it, as I was reading through the comments, was, well, Noma County has this wonderful program where they take low, low-level offenders and they divert them, right?
I saw the same one.
Right, and then, and then I'm like, well, we have that program too, but people aren't aware that we have that, so the public awareness piece becomes so important, and yet, how do you reach the public in a community where not, where the younger generation isn't reading, they're not reading newspapers, and Facebook is about the place where people get it, but that's, you know, we have Facebook pages, but how many people out there actually know it or connect with it? And I know Jolene's done a great job of growing that, but, you know, it's still, it's, it's spotty, and, and we don't have a local television station, so, other than CCTV, but that's cable access, which is different than having the network, so the, the news that people get, it's really, it's really tough to get the word out in this era of kind of social media and how people get their information.
This is only somewhat related, but just yesterday, there was an Oregonian article that came up from Facebook to me, and it was talking about, in Sweden, they burn their garbage and get electricity from it, how come nobody does that here? What, huh?
Where was that article from?
The Oregonian. But in Sweden, they do these amazing things.
Right.
Is that yesterday?
Well, and there was actually also a post about using recycled plastics for roads, that was, somebody posted that on Salem City Council, and I'm like, do you know how many years we've been trying to like actually take the ash and make it into a plastic?
And they do it in Florida, I guess.
Yeah, well-
Interesting you say that, because yesterday I did an interview with Melanie, and, you know, she, she started out, tell me about the burner, and I said, let's talk about the waste-to-energy facility. Well, I mean, you gotta keep telling people what this thing really is.
I know, I never would cooperate with that, but I know what you're trying to do.
Yeah, it's, I mean, we're generating electricity to power Woodburn.
What was your question, if I can ask?
Oh, it was about the pollution.
Oh.
And I just said, hey, we're, we're, we're under all the, all the standards that have been set for us, in fact, voluntarily lowered our standards to help DEQ so they could offset someplace else. And, and I just, and I did say, there's a lot of misinformation out there, a lot of misinformation that people, you know, and I think that, I think the, the question was about an article that was published in a local newspaper recently.
Full of misinformation.
I'm not even saying anything, but what, yeah, it's not worth-
Exactly what article and exactly what newspaper.
But anyway, in Sweden, they're real progressive, and the fact that we've been doing it for thirty years and doesn't get noticed.
Right, oh, and that's the-
We need to grab that, we need to grab that article and see what's in there, I need to see it, it'd be good, have some copies.
So solid waste, another area where we talked about needing to get the financial information out and pollution information out, and it's so tough. So communications is what we're gonna talk about on Thursday.
I think we've had another week without calling Jane's prowess, legal prowess, into question. How does that happen? Or even example, not question.
We're so glad to have you, Jane.
Thank you.
You know what, you could say, since she's been here, she's solved all her issues, we haven't had anything.
I like that.
We're just giving, we're just piling on more deeper ones, she's got research to do.
All right.
We got some, some, I think another thing that's interesting, and I, I just saw that we got a letter from Army Corps-
Oh, good.
-in response to our federal delegation's questions. I hadn't had a chance to read it, but hopefully you get a chance to read it on this Detroit Fish Passage, and they go into some detail of the concerns that were in that letter, so we'll see.
Somewhat related to what we were talking about, you know, this, right by the locks is the fish ladder, where the huge decimation of salmon and steel that is happening, not-
Seals come in there.
Absolutely, they, as the fish gather up below the ladders, they're just decimating them, and how come you couldn't take care of that problem?
Is there ladders in those falls?
Yeah. On the north side, it just goes up and over.
Okay, 'cause I've been there before when fish were jumping.
Up right into the falls?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're just truly gathering there, staging, ready, ready to go, and dodging seals while they wait.
Okay, so we need to get going early today.
Yeah, well, great conversation, good board meeting, thank you all, and if there's nothing else, we will adjourn.
Okay.